All right, Derlin, what do you think?
Well, we've got ourselves. Good people.
Six oh one.
Six oh one, let's kick this off.
There's John Adams, he just joined, okay, good, yeah. What Bill and I had discussed on Friday that he was going to sort of lead and facilitate the discussion. We had put together, as a lot of people probably saw on the website, we put together Mike Bender's questions and answers. So hopefully, people got a chance to review those. And so I think, Bill, why don't I just turn it over to you and see where we go?
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for asking me to be facilitator for this meeting. And I want to just take about a Kyle Avila there who's doing the stuff that I absolutely don't know how to do on these Zoom meetings. I had prepared some remarks, depending on how many people were here. I think if I'm looking at it, it doesn't appear as though there's very many people. So I don't think I need to say a number of the things I was gonna say. I did talk to Mike earlier and alerted him that I was gonna ask him to sort of kick us off by providing us with a brief overview based in part on the project itself or the engineering study that's proposed, and also supplemented by the kinds of questions that he's been getting from people. So, Mike, if you're prepared, then I'd invite you to start us off, and we can then proceed to take questions and get comments.
Sure thing, thanks, Bill. So I guess I gotta echo Bill's comments about seeing who's attended. It looks like everybody that is here is probably familiar with what we've been talking about for the last year and a half. I'd be happy to do an overview again if you want, but I don't want to waste everybody's time and rehashing everything we've been discussing for the last few months.
Well, Mike, I think.
I think you've answered, you know, I think I've been reading what you wrote on the questions that you posted on the website here. And I think you've been very thorough about it. I just have one question, and question one is, why don't we just build living quarters in Solmsville to seal harbor? Why a new building? I think the question was really about, why can't you provide just living quarters? Like, take the condominium that could be for sale across the street from the firehouse, which would be living quarters. Because I understand that there's very difficult and strategic things you have to do in order to build on the building you've got now, that you have to satisfy HIPAA and all these kind of things that you wouldn't have to if you just had living quarters in another house or something close to the firehouse.
Sure, Bill, you just want me to jump right into these?
Yes, yeah, well, I think what I'm gonna do is, if, given the size of the group we have right now, when John asks a question like that, you should feel free to respond, and if we get to be a larger number, then I'll try to step in and control the discussion a little bit more.
Okay, fair enough, and you know, again, I guess if anybody wants me to do a brief overview how we got here, I'd be happy to do that for anybody. John, that scenario is really not, is not done in the fire service, and there's a number of reasons. Primarily, time counts when you respond to emergencies, whether it's an EMS or a fire call or even police, but we're not talking about, you know, law enforcement now. But, so you want to have your staff, your responders, very close to your equipment, as close as you can, because you want to cut down not only minutes but seconds in responding. And how is your duty crew outside the fire station? You know, logistically, it can make it a little bit more difficult to respond in a timely manner. You know.
What if, what if it's that close? What if it's right across the street from the town office right now?
Well, you still have to, you'd have to get out of there and make your way to the fire station, you know. So you're talking about walking over or driving over or whatever. And in the wintertime, you know, that can be a little bit more challenging because of the snow and the conditions and things like that. And I, you know, believe me, I'm familiar with this because I've been responding to fire calls at nighttime for 35 years. And, you know, it takes a lot of time to get out of bed, get out to your car, scrape off six inches of snow. If you're plowed in, you gotta shovel your way out and get down to the fire station. Now, if you want to walk over, you know, from there, that can probably be done, but you're still adding, you know, probably a couple of minutes of running over to the fire station. You know, and if that worked, the fire service would have done that a long time ago. You'd see that type of situation elsewhere in the country, and you just don't see that much because it just, to be honest with you, it just doesn't make sense. You want your staff next to your fire trucks.
I agree to part of that, but I'm just trying to find a way to save a huge amount of money here. I mean, we're talking about two and a half million dollars to provide living quarters, and we're talking about, God knows what it's gonna be in Solmsville in that building. So I'm looking to try to be physically responsible as a citizen, because I'm also a taxpayer. So, you know, and I own my own businesses for 40 years, and I'm trying to look at a common sense, if we can do a common sense approach to this. And the things I see in here, like adding a fire boat, just don't make sense to me. The Harbor Master is right down there, we have the Harbor Masters boat right down there, and a fire boat that goes where? I mean, Cranberry Island, which is not the town of Mount Desert. I mean, where would you go with a fireboat?
Okay, I thank you, John, for your comments and pointing out these things. I also want to give an opportunity, if there's anyone else who's present here that has a question that they want to ask as well.
Sure.
Yes, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to ask Chief Bender or make a comment, as John has so ably done?
I have a question, sort of, might seem a little off topic, but, you know, I think whether we like it or not, the proposed project for Northeast Harbor and what occurs in Solmsville, they are linked to a certain degree. And this might be a bit of a remedial question, but we hear about the water situation in Solmsville, and I've never had someone clearly explain what the actual situation is with getting water to that building. I was just wondering, could you just quickly explain that, Mike? And then, how has it worked thus far, and how would you see that working sort of down the road if there were living quarters or something like that in Solmsville?
Sure. I've been told that when that building was built, 1980, 81, I think, somewhere in there, there was a well drilled, the water was tested, and it was deemed nonpotable due to a mill. Apparently, there used to be a sawmill there, and the groundwater is contaminated. And it's contaminated with TAC, I can't figure the chemical out. So they elected to run a line from the Masonic Hall. And when I say day, I'm talking about the Solmsville Fire Company, which existed back then and built that building, free of charge to the town, by the way. And so they elected to pipe water in from the Masonic Hall. So right now, the water is coming from the Masonic Hall across the street. It's suitable now because the building is not, you know, lived in. So the only time when they need water is when you're flushing the toilets, washing the trucks. Occasionally, there's functions going on in the community room, they use the sink. But it's not 100% reliable. We've found that, you know, when you have power outages and the generator doesn't start over in Masonic Hall, we don't have any water. And that, you know, we hadn't caused us any difficulties yet, but it can be an issue. I mean, you know, I can imagine returning from the fire and not having any water, they clean your trucks or equipment, or even wash your hands, you know. So I think, you know, if we pursue this Solmsville renovation, we're gonna have to solve this water problem. Now, I have, I haven't looked into it fully yet, but I believe, now, I don't know if this was the case back in 80, 81 when the building was built, but I believe there is treatment available for the water now with that chemical in there to make it usable. But obviously, we're gonna have to pursue that a little bit more in depth and, you know, try to solve that issue.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you, Matt, thank you. Another question? Or a comment?
So there's no town water that goes by the building, right?
No, just not.
That's what, yeah, somebody asked me that today, so now I know the answer.
Yeah, yeah, if there was, if there was, we'd have hydrants up there.
Yeah.
Mike, can you go back to John Adams' question regarding the boats? Because I think that, I don't think that was answered.
Sure, so we have a boat right now. It's a little eight-foot logic boat that was bought by the Solmsville Company probably 25 years ago. And the intent of that boat was to ferry firefighters and equipment over Rum Island on Long Pond, in case there was a wildland fire over there. But it was also purchased small enough and light enough so responders could use it during ice rescue, primarily dragging it across the ice, using it as a sled. We have since then been involved in marine type of rescues in and around the area. What we're finding, especially since 9/11, is the Coast Guard, which has been somewhat reliable for rescues and boat fires too, are more involved in homeland security now, so their availability, if that's where it is, is somewhat questionable because they're out of station more and more, doing homeland security duties. So we thought it would be time to purchase a boat that was actually seaworthy, I guess, you know, probably that way. But I also have some great concerns about the marina down here. The Harbor Master boat does not have any fire suppression capabilities on it whatsoever. And with the amount of boat traffic you have down here, and the amount of vessels you have in here during the summertime, you know, it wouldn't be, well, my concerns are is having a boat fire down here and then just going from one boat to another boat to another boat without us having any tools to try to fight a fire. So the boat that we were looking to purchase was gonna fill a dual role and be used for water rescues, if we should need to use that in and around the waters of the Mount Desert Island. We also would make it available to the ambulance service because there are times where the ambulance service is requested to go to Cranberry Isle, or either, well, let me go back a little ways. The ambulance service is either requested to send a paramedic out to the island, or there have been times where there may have been requests to send additional crews out there or bring a patient back. So that's the reason why we wanted to purchase a rescue boat. We haven't made that purchase yet, and we're still in the specification process, I guess, if you will, of that.
Can't you put fire suppression things that you need on the Harbor Masters boat?
Not that would be effective, I mean, we can always, you're kind of using a garden hose on a structure fire, that type of scenario with that. So the other thing, too, is the Harbor Master, I've found in the past, is not only always available, there's not somebody down there that can run that boat 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have been called when nobody's available to run the Harbor Masters boat down there. So it's not 100% reliable to use all the time.
So what kind of marine rescue things have you had to do? I can't hear you.
Yep, I'm not hearing him either.
Sorry, I get muted. A number of them are on Long Pond in the freshwater, but we have had calls for, to go to Bar Harbor for mutual aid, for kayaks overturned.
You mean to respond to Bar Harbor's problem?
Well, it's a mutual aid, John, you know, when they need help, we go over and help them. When we need help, they come over and help us.
Do they have a boat?
They do not, well, the fire department does not have a boat, no.
But is there a boat available?
The police, the police department has a boat over there.
So that should be able to take care of Bar Harbor then.
Well, I can't speak for Bar Harbor. I'm just saying that when they ask us for help, we respond with the staff and equipment they're requesting.
So in terms of this engineering study that's on Article 24, Mike, is the, the potential that one of the bays would be used for a boat? Or is the boat sort of tangential to this engineering study itself?
No, the boat has nothing to do with engineering study. The boat has nothing to do with the design of the fire station. We're not adding any bays or not adding any room for a boat.
Okay.
Well, you say right in there that you are. You know, and if it's not used for a boat, maybe a tank truck, you're gonna bring over from time to time. And if you're not using for that, then you need to use it to park your truck in the building. Right? That's what you answered with.
Right, well, we're gonna store the boat or our trucks inside the truck base, yes.
Does the police department have bays that they can park in in the winter?
The Mount Desert Police?
Yeah.
They have one, what we call a Sally Board.
Are there other questions for Mike with respect to the engineering study or Article 24?
Well, I just, mine is just a general question in that. But it's related to all of this, and, I just lost it, excuse me.
Well, just let me know, and then, because we'll go right back to you, but in the meantime, if anyone else has a.
Yeah, I'd like to have some questions from other people. Doesn't seem to be, though.
Could I ask if there's anybody here that is involved either with the fire department or EMS and all that would like to comment from their perspective as to what this kind of a project might offer?
I could throw something in, Bill, if you want.
Okay, Basil, thank you.
Yeah, so with the, kind of the dual approach to having staffing in Solmsville and Northeast Harbor, a lot of that was brought about by the fact that the ambulance service actually has a large number of calls in the Solmsville area. And kind of through the years, we've realized that responding to life-threatening emergencies from Northeast Harbor is, it's a long ways to go. I mean, when we're going to Solmsville or Hall Quarry or Pretty Marsh, there's times where it can be upwards of almost 20 minutes to get there, and that's, you know, a long time to wait if you really need help. And so that was really one of the big reasons why, you know, Mike and I talked, and Chief Willis and Derlin, about splitting this up and not putting all our eggs in one basket here in Northeast Harbor, and, you know, doing something in both communities. And I really think this has the potential to really increase the abilities of the fire department and EMS and offer a lot to the community by doing this. So I definitely recognize that there's a large cost that goes along with this, but hopefully, the improvement in service will be worth the cost that it will take to do it. So.
Thank you, Basil.
Yeah, no problem.
I would tend to agree with that wholeheartedly, that the growth is going to happen on the west side of the town. I mean, look at the lots for sale and the land for sale, and all of that, you know, is happening over there. I know you make a lot of calls in Northeast Harbor, but probably 99% of them are fire alarm calls in the buildings and not an actual fire. I think there were 200 of them last year, weren't there? It were just false alarm calls. So I disagree in the sense that you think this all ought to be based in Northeast Harbor, and it was important to do that. I still think, looking, trying to look down the road five and 10 years, where's our growth going to be? In the town of Mount Desert, it's gonna be there, because in Northeast Harbor, we don't have any land. And what land that 365 bought up, they've openly said that they can't afford to build anything on it. It's under $400,000, so it's not gonna do anything for affordable housing. I'm just really worried about, as a town, you know, I've lived here since 1947. So we tend to jump into things, and then, and then we look down the road, and when we get down the road, we look back and go, geez, I wish we hadn't done that. And I just don't want to be, gee, I wish we hadn't done that situation with this, because you're talking about an enormous amount of money. Look at the village improvement, whatever it was, the beautification of the village. I don't know how much money's been spent, but we've got a wider sidewalk. We have three huge metal poles put in. We have very conveniently a waiting pool, both in front of the, the post office when it rains. Actually, it's in the spot where housing for, I mean, parking for restricted parking is, or in front of Kimball Lane or whatever it is, we just have this water, the street is terrible in the village. And I don't know how much money we spent, but this is a good example of doing things and getting ahead of ourselves. So I'm, I'm just, now that the ambulance service is part of it, I think it needs a whole rethink. I think it needs a real good study, and I don't want to waste $300,000 or less on something that we may not do. That's my concern. I think we're ahead of, I think you're putting a cart a little bit of the head of the horse here. So that's, that's my only comment on it, and I'll not comment any further.
Mike, it's my understanding that the engineering study itself is divided into some phases? Is that correct?
No, it's not. The engineering study, actually, it's what we're asking money for is to have design services through bidding. So what we're asking the design team to do is design the building, get all the permits together, have everything ready so we can send it out to bid to get actual building prices on that. So there's really not any phases to it.
I guess, yeah. I was thinking of your memo to the warrant committee where you described different phases in the project. And so the design phase, as opposed to the bid phase of the permitting, the design phase is the one that the engineering is devoted to?
Yeah, I guess, I'm not really clear on your question, but what the proposal is, is to hire these people to design, again, to design the building and have everything ready to send out to bid. So in the town meeting of 2022, we can ask, we can actually come to the town voters and say, this is how much it's gonna cost to do this building in Northeast Harbor, and will you approve the funding for it?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I guess while we're waiting, I'll maybe address some of John's comments, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't think we have the luxury of time, John. And, well, we may, but my feeling and my outlook is that, and I can't tell you exactly when it's gonna happen, but in a few years, you're gonna have a staffing issue in the fire department and any EMS. Well, obviously, we know the ambulance service is not gonna be around after 2023, so something's gonna have to be done there. Now, you know, if the voters want to wait, and/or if the voters don't want to do this project, that's fine with me. You know, I'm giving you my best scenario, my best solutions to continue your fire and EMS service for the town. And so when you call somebody at 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM, you know, you're gonna expect somebody to show up at your door. If, you know, the town doesn't want that, then that's fine, I understand that, and, you know, we'll do the best we can with the resources we have. But I can probably guarantee you that in a few short years, there're gonna be some times where somebody's gonna be calling the ambulance or somebody's gonna be calling for a fire truck, and you're gonna have to wait either a long time to get one from another town, or you may not have a fire truck show up at all. So, you know, but it's, obviously, it's up to the voters for that. And if that's the way they choose to go, then, you know, we'll do the best we can with the staff that we can until, you know, something happens and something's forced to happen, or, you know, to solve the situation.
Well, the primary problem is housing, right? And finding people to come here and work.
Yeah.
And providing housing for them. So I'm just saying, maybe we ought to look harder at trying to find a housing solution without spending probably $5 million. So that's my only concern, I'm, as I said, I've owned my own companies, I've had to build my own companies, and so I've had to be practical in everything that I did and common sense about it. So I'm just asking for a little time here to maybe see if we can find another way that wouldn't cost all that amount of money. That's really my concern, Mike. I'm not objecting to the work that you've done and the way you've laid it out. It's just, and what happens in town meetings is we fight over something that's $400, and then something that's two and a half million dollars, we just, our eyes glaze over and we just go ahead with it. I mean, it's always been that way. So I'm just trying to prevent some of that.
Sure, yeah, no, I can understand, and I, you know, I kind of, I'll have to agree that the housing can and has contributed to, you know, our lack of, in my opinion, our lack of volunteers that are available for the ambulance and the fire department. But that's something the fire chief can't solve, I mean.
Absolutely, I agree.
And that's, and that's the bigger picture, and that, you know, and I'll be honest with you, that's probably something that should have been looked into 15, 20 years ago.
Oh, I, we tried back in the 80s and got nowhere.
Yep, but it certainly is a problem. I mean, we're seeing more and more buildings turn into seasonal housing rentals. And the other issue, too, is the people that are moving in their community are not really community-minded, the people that are outgoing and go out and, you know, volunteer their services. And unfortunately, they may not be the best candidates to be a firefighter and EMT.
I would be one of those. At my age.
Well, great, well, thank you very much for that exchange, too.
Kathy Miller has her hand up.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, I couldn't see that.
And Carrie Sands after that.
Good, thank you.
Yes, since representing Mount Desert 365, and since John mentioned us earlier, we have bought land, we have not given up hope on putting housing in there and in the places along Main Street to have apartments as well. Yes, the cost of construction is exorbitant and has only gone up since we got some very high bids when we did go out to bid on a couple of houses. And it is well beyond the reach of average income people. But we have not given up hope, we're looking for other models that we might put in there that will be affordable. So I don't want any rumors to get out or any misinformation that we bought this land and we're not gonna do anything with it. We're still moving ahead with plans, but it is expensive, and we're trying to find some reasonable and more affordable options, so.
Thank you, Kathy, thank you. And Carrie, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, thank you. I am newish in town, and I'm furiously scrolling through the draft warrant, trying to locate this 2.5 million number that has been thrown around, because I'm understanding that this conversation is more about 300,000-ish for an engineering study to look at plans for a future potential building. Do I have that correct? And where's the 2.5 million number coming from, just so I can get caught up and see where the data's coming from? Thank you.
Mike, can you respond to that?
Yeah, certainly, no, you're correct. The warrant article that we're discussing is for 357,500. The 2.1, 2.5, and it's kind of crept up to 3, but the figure that you hear kicking around is the initial estimate for the addition to the Northeast Harbor Fire Station. But I have to be careful that, to make sure everybody realizes that this is a concept estimate. So it's a real rough estimate, it's just based on the square footage that we're asking to add and what the current cost of that square footage is for. and what uh, the current cost of that square footage is for construction of that type of building today.
And and I saw in your email that you had maybe based that by looking at some recent um, projects in other towns in Maine like Farmingdale and Orington, Scarborough, et cetera. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Certainly, you're welcome.
And I think somebody else had a question as well. See.
Wendy. I think Wendy does.
Okay.
Wendy, you're on mute.
Okay, here we go. So I just wanted to kind of, um, you know, John, I, you know, this whole fiscally responsible thing is has been a thorn, you know, I think in all of our sides through this process. Um, and I know, you know, we have had discussions and and even back, way back when we sort of said to Mike, hey, come up with some plans to figure it out. Um, and I agree, you know, I still do have some of those fiscally responsible, you know, concerns. But when you hear, um, you know, statements from Mike that I think are really real about, you know, that down the road, there might not be that ambulance person available in those few minutes. And and, you know, and we may not be able to attract the the right people. And I think this, I I mean, it's interesting, I I, you know, I, I, your comment about if we're talking about four hundred dollars, everybody has a problem. And this is pure example of that when this meeting, I mean, our, as a select person, like, my hope was to get some, you know, real, um, you know, comments and concerns and have some good questions and conversation about this and see where the voters um, felt about this warrant article. But as you look around, you know, most of the people on this meeting come to regular select board meetings and they've been here through the process and heard us. So, um, you know, I agree, we need to be fiscally responsible. And unfortunately, everything costs money, including these, these studies. And, you know, I think Mike's, you know, and has done a great job sort of coming back to the planning board and coming back and coming back with, with other ideas. But um, you know, those statements that he makes that I think are really real is what kind of hits home as far as where we need to go with this.
Thank you, Wendy.
This is Jeff Wood. I I would add, we, we, as a select board, and I don't know about the warrant committee, I don't know how, I've been to a lot of those meetings. But we, we put Mike through the, through the wringer really quite, quite a lot. And I, before I came on the board too, I think he's been making the argument that we need a full-time fire department. We need to be forward-thinking and and, you know, I think that uh, we, we did continually ask him to, you know, try again, try again. This isn't working. This is too much. This is too, too, I, whatever. And then, I mean, he was making those arguments prior to the ambulance's services announcement of 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 the change in that. I think that that, I mean, I guess my, my, my feeling at this point is I was not easily convinced. Um, but at this point, all the challenges we posed to him and and all the the diligence that he and Basil and and working with Jim Willis as well, um, it to come to the, the hope of the, this vision for the, for the, um, for the fire and EMS service is one that that I, I support. And uh, I too worry about all the things that you talk about, the financial situation and the housing situation. I work in the field of education and that is one of the biggest challenges we face in the schools right now is getting teachers because they can't live here. They can't afford to live here. And uh, anyway, so I just wanted to put my, my two cents on that, that I was not easily convinced and and but I'm in support of this, um, at least moving forward, seeing what, what it will cost and trying to make it work.
Thank you.
Brian Henkel has his hand up.
Okay, Brian. Thank you, Jeff. I'm having trouble seeing the different people. But, so Brian?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think, guess, uh, the first, the first thing is that you, I think that Chief Bender has done a really good job in looking at the situation, trying to come up with some sort of reasonable plan for going forward and assessing what are the needs for the town. I think that there could hit, there could be some assistance in that process in terms of either hiring consultant or finding a way to have somebody come in who can do a study that can support what Chief Bender is seeing. I think he's seeing the reality of the situation. But that there could be some support um, by hiring a professional to, to uh, study where are the calls going? How far are they? How often are they happening? What is the requirement overnight? To 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 support this idea that we need twenty-four hour. I I don't doubt Chief Bender's um, conclusions on this at all. I think that it, there could be some, some further support by having a study that, that, that's done to, to assist in, in setting a path forward. I think the path forward that we have actually probably is right though with putting in full-time twenty-four hour um, fire. And I think that the price tag for it, while, you know, that sounds like a very high number in today's world and in today's numbers, I don't think it's that astronomically high. This is just the reality of the world that we currently live in is that these kinds of things are very expensive. We're shifting from, you know, a volunteer system with a few full-time employees and non-twenty-four hour service to twenty-four hour service and more dedicated numbers. Uh, that, that's not a cheap jump, unfortunately, but that's going to be expensive to make that kind of a jump. And that's an expense that I think is worthwhile. I believe that Chief Bender has understood the situation. So, uh, yeah, I, 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 I think it, I think it's a good move forward. I think it's a difficult thing. And I would like to be able to have a better way to address lots of community concerns about why this money is being spent. And I think the chief has done a great job of doing that. I think he could, there could have been further support in that, in that role of being the defender for why we need this.
Thank you.
Bill, could I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely, that, yes.
I just, I would agree with much of what Brian just said. It's, you can sort of lay it out um, the way Mike has uh, time and time again, but sometimes you need that sort of reinforcement. And one thing, um, that I don't know whether it was you, Mike, or maybe Basil, uh, that map that you had with all the little pinpoint dots all over where every call had been over the past year. I just think supportive documents like that, um, if we can make those available um, or even fine tune them a little bit, might be helpful because it, it just, that visual really allows people to see how spread out the calls are and how they really are sort of on a fifty-fifty nature Northeast Harbor and the, the Somerville Hull Quarry pretty marsh area.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, Matt, we can, um, we actually probably should clean those maps up a little bit, make them, you know, more understandable. But yeah, we can do that and maybe uh, post them on the town website for people to see or.
Yeah, I think it might be helpful.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, and and again, this is how, these are, this is how the conclusion, this is how I came to these conclusions. It's, 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 we try to be data-driven, you know, and then when we look at the number of calls, that's where we try to figure out the best locations, uh, you know, for your, uh, for your staff and your stations and your trucks and stuff like that. We just don't randomly, you know, pick spots on the map and say, this is a good place for a fire station. So, you know, I think it's helpful to have that information out there so people can actually see where the calls are.
I think it'd be good also to see if it's actually a fire call or a false alarm. And by the way, speaking of the false alarm part, you know, where you come out and it's just something wrong with their system in their house. Do we charge them for, I know we don't for a first call, but I think we ought to have something if it happens two and three times to the same location that they ought to be charged for. I mean, it take, you gotta bring equipment out, you gotta rush to see if it's a fire and then, you know, no, it's just an alarm system. There ought to be some kind of mechanism, I think, to, to make some revenue off that. So it's a tremendous waste of time for you guys. And let them figure out how to get their own systems working better.
I thought we did decide to charge for false alarms.
No, we have not. Um, the board asked me to look into that, um, guessing about eight, ten years ago. And so we did some studies, um, both for fire and uh, burglar alarms. And um, after we looked at about two years' worth of calls, um, we realized that even though we have a high amount of false alarms in town, both for burglary and uh, and fire. Um, when it came down to locations, there was only, within two years, there was only maybe four or five uh, buildings that had multiple false alarms. Most of the alarms are at least one or like a one-time or maybe twice-a-year occurrence. So by the time you put in all the work of registering all the fire alarms in Northeast Harbor and having contacts and billing addresses and stuff like that, uh, just for a few hundred dollars, it just didn't seem, um, you know, worthwhile to to pursue that uh, charging for false alarms. Most communities do not charge for the first one anyway. Um, I mean, if this community wants to, that's fine. That's up to the, to the elected officials. But um, so you'd only charge either after the second or third alarm. And, you know, about responding to false alarms, we respond to every call like it's a real emergency. Um, I've instructed our staff to do that, to treat every call as a real emergency until they get on scene and determine that there's no life, property or environmental hazards there. If we start treating faults, like all the calls or suspected false alarms as false alarms, that's when complacency starts setting in and that's when you get yourself in real trouble. So, you know, I, I guess I would advise uh, against that, but, you know, again, that's not my decision. It's, it's above my, above my pay grade.
Great, thank you.
Jerry Miller has his hand up.
Okay, good. Jerry?
Uh, the other part of false alarms is half the time, the false alarms are not caused by kids pranking the alarms or anything. They're caused by technical glitches in the alarm systems that people put in there that are increasingly more elaborate than they need to be. Um, when I was on the board of Neighbored House years and years and years ago, we put in an alarm system for the gym that went off once a week. Um, not through our fault, not through anybody messing with it. But once a week, I got to drive in from Somerville to let everybody in to make sure that the alarm was working again and it was a glitch. And not anybody's particular fault, except maybe the alarm companies, but um, so it's something that, you know, I doubt there are many malicious false alarms that you've dealt with, are there?
No, no, that's, that's very rare. Most of your false alarms are either uh, equipment related, like you said, technical. Um, a lot of them are contractor initiated. Uh, people going into houses and starting work without properly covering the alarms. And a majority of them too are people that probably shouldn't be having fires in the fireplaces but elected to do so and fill the house up with smoke. Um, yeah, so.
Kyle?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to John's uh, point that uh, we should be charging for these false alarms when a lot of these properties that do have the false alarms have a fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar tax bill that they're paying every year. So I would like to think they have paid for those calls in their property tax bill. That's kind of the point of having a tax bill.
You got Brian's hand up again.
Okay, Brian, thank you, Jeff.
Uh, I, I think we've probably, you know, spent enough time on false alarms. I don't think that the need for twenty-four hour service is being driven by a misunderstanding about the number of false alarms on Chief Bender's part. So I, I appreciate the conversation that people want to have, you know, fewer false alarms if at all possible, but I also, I don't, I did, I think we're a little off topic on this.
Just, this Basil, you mind if I say something real quick?
Sure.
Um, Basil from the ambulance service, just so everybody knows too, um, the ambulance service is actually already staffing people twenty-four seven, um, just because of, sorry, the radio here is making a noise. Um, just because we have, we're having such a hard time, you know, getting staff, you know, reliably to respond from home using the kind of traditional volunteer fire department model, um, that we've already transitioned to that. And we started um, at the beginning of the pandemic, having a full crew on. Um, and so a lot of this planning for having staffing in the stations twenty-four seven really is already happening. It's just, we're having to do it in kind of a hodgepodge fashion. We've got people scattered all over to do it. And Mike's plan would allow these folks to just, you know, be at the station and, you know, would allow a faster response time. Because like he says, you know, if, if I have somebody here at the medical center or wherever they are and there's a snowstorm or something like that, they do have to, you know, you know, get their car, get in their car and figure out how to clean it off, things like that. Um, and, I mean, while it seems foolish, it is something you have to deal with. Um, and, I mean, unfortunately, I think this is, Mike's got it, or fortunately or whatever, I mean, Mike's got a good plan. And I really think this is a, you know, a good option for the town. And it's unfortunate that it costs a lot of money because I'm a taxpayer too and I just assume not spend a lot of money. But I think this is where we need to go, unfortunately.
Thank you. Well, we're about forty-five plus minutes into this and I don't know if people are feeling that uh, we're getting to the point where we might want to wrap up for tonight. And if you do feel that way, then I'd certainly invite people if they wanted to make any kind of summary statement as to what they feel that they've, they're hearing or or what they would uh, like to see us focus on when we think about this a week from today.
I'd just like to um, thank Bill for, for organizing this and and putting it together and Mike for your answers in advance. I think the reason we're not getting a lot of questions is you've answered all of them and very well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anybody else or? Chief, do you want the last word?
No, I probably said enough already. No, I, I, I just, you know, again, I, I heard somebody say, we wish there was a lot more people here and I, I did too. You know, I thought there would be more interest and uh, more questions and and more people just wanted to know what was going on. But um, no, I, you know, again, I'll just reiterate, it's up to the voters. If, if uh, people don't want this, uh, or they want to wait, you know, um, it would probably be wise to vote this down next Tuesday because there's not much sense uh, spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a study that uh, you're not going to pursue or thinking about doing five or ten years from now. Uh, but just be prepared for the consequences if you do. You know, I can't guarantee what the future lies for the, for the fire service, at least for our department as far as staffing goes. Um, but, you know, um, whatever uh, hand we're dealt, we'll do the best we can, you know, for the, for the citizens and the community. And um, as always, I just appreciate all the support that everybody's given us over the past few months, the past years. Um, and I'm speaking for the entire department, you know, on that too. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Derlin, any last words?
Well, I share that I wish that we had more people, but I thought the discussion was excellent. And I thought these are the type of questions that we probably will get to uh, to see next week at, at town meetings. So I think Mike's done a very good job preparing for them. I think the select board has done a very good job of preparing Mike for this uh, through their questions and through their concerns and over the past year or two. So, so I'm very pleased. I think we, I think we have a, we have a sound plan. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. But I think the, the consequences of delay are certainly more fearsome than the consequences of uh, of pushing forward. So I just hope we have a good discussion and the people will decide. And uh, I can assure you that we'll all do like Mike says, we'll do our best. We'll take the results of the town meeting, learn from them and we'll go forward and uh, and uh, and continue on to the next one. So again, thanks everyone for showing up here today. Much appreciated.
Well, thank you, Derlin, for your role in organizing this. Well, if no one has anything else to say, then I guess, uh, Kyle, we're Well, if no one has anything else to say, then I guess Kyle, we're we're done.
We don't need a motion to adjourn?
No.
I just pushed the end button.
Thank you, everybody.
Everybody.
Thanks, Bill.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks.
All right.